Good evening, everybody. We're going to call to order the Tuesday, December 3rd meeting of the Corder Madera Town Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ravazio.
Here.
Mayor Beckman.
Here. Please join me in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We're going to have open time. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. Members of the public will be given three minutes apiece. We will start with in-person public comment. If you'd like to make public comment for open time, please come on up. Yes, sir. It's the Honorable Steve Burdo.
Steve Burdo, San Anselmo resident, member of the San Anselmo Town Council. I realize you have an agenda item for this tonight, but this isn't what I'm here to talk about. But I did want to first extend my thanks and gratitude to Councilmember Lee for his service on the council. Had the pleasure of serving with him on the Central Marine Police Board, and he's a fine public servant, and the whole town owes him a debt of gratitude for everything he's done over the last four years. Also wanted to send my well wishes to my dear friend, Mayor Eli Beckman, who will be transitioning out as mayor, my beloved Pat Ravazio, who I believe will be transitioning in as mayor, and I know you're entitled. No? Oh, oh, you don't want to change. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. But I know all of your council members in your town is very well served. But that's not why I'm here tonight. I'm here tonight to make a confession and perhaps an apology. We'll see where this goes. But I proudly serve the Residence Accord Madera on the Central Marine Police Board, and most recently, the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority Board. We had an emergency meeting a couple of weeks ago. It was right here in this town hall chambers. And while the discussion was going all types of ways, needed a moment to kind of just look at the wall and think. And I noticed that the town clerk had left out some of the placards for the council members. And so, you know, in just a moment of, you know, ha, ha, let's do this, I took Mayor Eli Beckman's plaque. And I figured, why waste the opportunity? Because, you know, I could have just taken it, and Lorena could have been like, and made her life hell, which, by the way, that's exactly what Fred wanted. But I figured, why waste the opportunity? I was going to a bunch of events and doing a bunch of travel. So I thought I'd bring Placard Eli along with me. So I have here for each of the council members.
There are photos of where Placard Eli has been.
Oh, boy.
So in this, in this first one, we have a great dinner out with friends. That's Sean Taylor Walker, our newly elected council member in San Anselmo. That's Councilmember Alexis Feiman. And we were having a nice celebratory dinner, and we thought Placard Eli would would love to join us. Then we have, we went out with some of our good friends. We were going to a disco night at the Mystic and Petaluma. And we thought Placard Eli would really love to go to that, too. So those are our friends Scott, Cal, and Riley there with Placard Eli. This is Placard Eli at Gimme Gimme Disco at the Petaluma. A little hard to see because everybody's wearing flashing glasses. This next one is Mayor Placard Eli Beckman at JFK Airport, and just grabbing randos at this point to take pictures with me. And then, of course, Placard Eli at Thanksgiving Dinner with my family and my niece Sarah passing him the greatest. So with that, I proudly return.
Wow. Thank you, Steve. Going to need to get this placard its own passport here.
Just try and add some levity to work that can be oftentimes very stressful, trying. But you all are fine public servants in the town accord, and we're lucky to have you all. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Steve. Happy holidays. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else with us in person who would like to make any perhaps less elaborate public comment?
All the placards, by the way.
Oh, man. Would you like to make a comment, Suzy? Come on up. No worries. And we're, we're going to get to our, our reorganization a little bit here, too. So we'll have plenty of opportunity for everyone to poke fun and celebrate the shuffle.
Well, my name is Suzy Beatty, and I'm really, I wasn't sure I was going to come by tonight, but I was thinking about really, truly, what an important thing this is. And, you know, people moving in and out of our council. And I think I wanted to say thank you to all of you for the great job that you've done this last session. And you work so well with the community. I'm on a couple of committees and have been so happy with how you work with the town. And I know that the new people, person who's coming in, will do also the same. So that's all. I just, it was sort of by the cuff here. I was.
Well, thank you so much, Suzy. Any other in-person public comment for open time here? This is just for items not on tonight's agenda. Not seen any hands up. Do we have any hands up via Zoom, Lorena?
Yes, we do. We have a hand raised from Roy Wolford.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm addressing an item from the last council meeting, November 19th. Aren't the council members supposed to be nonpartisan? Near the conclusion of the meeting, a statement was made by a council member that seemed to be quite partisan. The council member was promoting the MCCM Legislative Group that was scheduled to meet with the state Senator Mike McGuire. They said, we are looking for anyone with ideas on how we protect ourselves from the forthcoming federal government regarding climate, immigration, workers' rights, reproductive rights, and so forth. They are brainstorming how to make the best defense a good offense. This meeting happens next Monday if anyone has any ideas. Does the council really want to get partisan? It would not be a pretty picture. How many illegals should enter the United States? Fifty million? A hundred million? A billion? And how many of the illegals should replace US citizens, legal resident workers, and reproductive rights? How many more abortions should be performed in California each year? Ten million? Twenty million? Unlimited? And of course, each abortion denies what the United States' Constitution ordained and established, and that is the blessings of liberty to ourselves, the living, and our posterity with a capital P, the unborn, the future. Gavin Newsom had been mentioned earlier. The governor said he wanted to be the resistance against the US government. Sounds as if he wants the South to rise again. Is this what each council member is looking for? And we won't delve into the governor's strong opposition to Prop 36, anti-crime, that passed with 71% of the votes. Let's look at the council member's DEI mission and values achievement. For the current and past councils, how many council members were Democrats, independents, or Republicans? Hmm, let's count. One, two, three, four, five. Four Democrats and one independent for each council. Have the council members failed to obtain their mission and value objectives? Let's see. No Republicans equals no diversity and no inclusion, and of course, no equity. Is this a failure? If any councilor staff member would like to discuss any of the aforementioned or other matters, I'm open to having a discussion with you. Please call me.
Thank you. Lorena, do we have any other hands up for public comment via Zoom?
We do not have any additional hands raised via Zoom, and we didn't receive any emailed public comment for open time.
Okay, so seeing no further public comment, we will close open time. Item three on tonight's agenda is a declaration of the results of the November 5th municipal election. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Beckman. Good evening, council members, vice mayor, mayor. Before I use the staff report requesting the adoption of Resolution 412024, which recites the facts of the election and declares the results. Earlier today, the Marin County Register of Voters certified the results of the November 5th municipal election. There were two town council seats that were up for the election. Three candidates qualified for the ballot. Those individuals are James H. Andrews, Fred Casissa, and Charlie Krishner. James H. Andrews and Fred Casissa were elected by the following vote, with Fred Casissa receiving 3,369 votes, which was 44.01%. James H. Andrews received 2,396 votes, making that 31.3%, and Charlie Krishner, 1,890 votes, receiving 24.69%. At this time, the town council was asked to declare the final results of the election by resolution, as is the process that we must take to accept the results and declare the facts of the election. And I can answer any questions if you have any.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions from council members? No questions. We'll take public comment on this item. Any in-person public comment on this item? Not seeing anyone who wishes to speak. Do we have any hands up for Zoom public comment on this item?
We do not have any hands raised on Zoom, and we didn't receive emailed public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no public comment, we will bring this item back to the council for discussion or a motion.
I can make the motion to adopt the Resolution Number 412024, accepting the election results.
And I'll second.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravazio.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
All righty. Thank you very much. Item four on tonight's agenda, a tough one. It is recognition of our outgoing council member, Charles Lee. I'm going to turn it over to staff first to introduce this item. We're going to invite Charles to speak, and I'm sure there's, there's going to be council members and community members and family members probably who are going to want to say some words to appreciate Charles.
Charles, I think we're going to head straight to the presentation of some of the commendations that we've received from various elected officials. We also have a gift from staff as well to present to you. I'm going to reserve some remarks. I want to give the council a chance to obviously say a few words to you prior to me speaking. But I do hope to have a chance to say a few words and just thank you for all your support for town staff. With that, Rebecca, do you want to actually bring some of those items up? This was, this is sort of a, the first gift is.
Yes, I don't know if maybe Lorena can recite the, the people who supplied the commendations and proclamations.
Yes, so we received recognitions from, for Councilmember Lee's service on the town council from Senator Padilla, Congressman Huffman. We received the joint recognition from State Senator McGuire and Assembly Member Connolly, and Supervisor Redoni also provided a recognition, thanking you for your service on the town council. And two years ago, we, we did, when we went over this item, we took public comment first and then went over the presentations and remarks. But Mayor, you can decide how you'd like to.
Charles, do you have a preference?
Let me begin with, well, all I want to say is, one of the things I learned from the four years of service, and the thing that I think is most powerful coming away from this is the power of the question. I think it's embedded in what we do and how we operate. And I have found it to be a wonderful tool to grow as a person and professionally represent people and take more responsibility through communication and less opinionated kind of discussion. And, and so with that, going to the rules of order and allowing others to make statements before we finalize our own, I'm fine with. But, you know, on that one, I, I think that a question is probably the thing I take away with the most strength out of all of this in my personal growth. So.
Thank you so much, Charles. So I want to invite members of the community who'd like to speak to do so. And then I think your fellow council members would like to share some words as well. But we're going to open public comment on this item. So anybody who'd like to speak, please come on up and line up here at the podium. And we'll just go one by one. We'll do three minutes apiece, and then we'll take public comment via Zoom as well. So if you're on Zoom and would like to speak, please go ahead and raise your hand, and we will bring you on. We'll start with anyone in person tonight who'd like to say any words. Should have saved yours, Suzy. Yeah. We can take Zoom public comment if we've got hands up?
I think typically the public doesn't comment. We do not have any hands raised, and we didn't receive emailed public comment for this item.
Okay, that's good. More time for us to sing Charles's praises. Why don't we just go down the line, Rosa? Do you want to start us off?
Sure. You know, it's great that you brought up the idea of the question, because what I admire the most about you is that you find the questions beneath the question. And so what I've learned from you over my time of serving with you is that the answer doesn't always lie in the primary question. The answer lies in more of a structural question that might have to do with society, or might have to do with, you know, technology or whatever. But those are where the real answers lie. And you always brought up those questions and made it clear the complexity of what we do here. And it's really, you know, I feel for me, it elevated my opinion of what, what I'm doing here. So thank you. I want to give you a hug.
Thank you, Rosa. I'll go last. You want to go, Pat?
Uh, sure. You're not going anywhere. We've already talked about all the ways that Charles can stay involved with his great architecture skills and design skills and building skills. And I know where he lives. And I do want to say, in all seriousness, not that that wasn't serious, I love the way Charles went deep on things. When the Scotty Lap people came and wanted to build the skate park, you actually cried. And it's very unusual to see somebody who is that comfortable with themselves, that they can just truly go wherever they need to go to say what they want to say. And I really appreciated that about you. So, yeah, you're not going anywhere.
Fred?
I think the one thing I'm a big time miss about you is you have so much expertise on the construction architect side. And half the times, I'll be honest with you, stuff you were saying was kind of like going over my head. But you could go that deep with it. And I think it was really great because like staff, I think RJ a couple of times was look over, over even going like, where did that come from? But they were all valid, and they were all great questions. But you could go deep with the architect stuff and again, construction. It's a level of expertise, I can tell you how to put a nail in a wall, and that's about it. But I think it really assisted us on the council, especially when we're going through projects like, you know, sewer master plan, those types of projects. I think it really helped me to have a better understanding. And the other thing I'll give you big time credit for is people just think we're on council. They don't realize we serve on other boards and commissions sometimes. And Charles served, I served on Central Marine Police Authority Council with him. And back in November, we had a big push, and Charles kind of took the lead on this for Central Marine to get EV police cars. And at the time, it wasn't right for Chief Norton. At that time, it wasn't the right thing. Couldn't find the right fit. Fast forward now, and at our last police council meeting, we're purchasing two all EV police cars. It'll be the first law enforcement agency in Marin County to have all EV police cars. And the plan is over the, his plan over the next five years is to replace all patrol cars and go EV. So again, kudos to you for like, pushing that green effort through. It's a big thing. It is. Thanks.
And Charles, I'll say, you know, I was thinking about like, what I wanted to say, what I wanted to focus on. There's all these ideas swirling around in my head, and it kind of just like crystallized for me. I think one of the things I always thought was so cool about you and, and the role that you've played on our council and as a leader in our community, is you have this like old school civic spirit that it feels like, like what we learned about in, in like history about like ancient Greece or something, like just like the celebration of democracy, like doing democracy. And you really like, it's just, it's been so clear all the way through that you really feel that in your bones, and that that is what, what drives you. That's what drove you to get involved. That's what colored the way that you conducted yourself, you know, especially during your time as mayor. You just like, it was, it was incredible to watch and incredible to be part of. So, you know, that's one thing that really sticks out to me. And I also want to say, just you have such a creative and unique way of thinking. And I think the diversity of perspectives and backgrounds and ways of thinking, like, that's what makes a council strong. And I think that over the last four years, we have a council have really been stronger and made better decisions because we've had you as part of this team, you know, sharing, sharing your thoughts, sharing your insights, helping guide us, helping open our eyes to things that we wouldn't have otherwise seen. So just want to thank you for, for everything that you've made possible over the last four years. And I'm going to give you a hug as well.
I'm not going anywhere. I just, I need to, you know, I just need a break.
Fair enough.
If I could just, real quickly, and I think those were such great comments by all of our council members. And that's why I wanted you to go first and say that first. But I do appreciate, I've had the, the privilege of really working with Charles, first on the Planning Commission for, I don't know how long it was, but several years, and now more recently on the town council. And I just, I've gotten to know you. We both are family men, growing our families together. We both have three boys. And so I talk a lot about that. All have baseball players. And so it's just been a real great friendship and an honor to work with you in that capacity. I think what Mayor Beckman said as well, I just know how much contributing to your community means to you. And that just shines through time and time again. And so I see that on the council. You're, you're, the way that you question staff's proposals, staff reports, and projects, it all contributes to making those ultimately the council's policies and programs so that much better. So just been really enjoyed working with you. And on behalf of all of our staff and our great team, you know, just thanks for all the support you've provided our, all of us over the course of the last many years. So look forward to many more years of, of working with you in a different capacity. So thanks, Charles.
Make one more call if anybody else wants to speak. I know it's scary speaking in a public meeting. So we, you know, Charles is not going anywhere, as we said.
I just had a few comments. I should have gone before Adam, but I echo all the same sentiments about working with you and your support for, for staff and our work and watching you engage with the community. I just wanted to remind everyone how your term started. You were elected on March 3rd, 2020. And on March 17th, the town had a special meeting to ratify the proclamation of local emergency. You were sworn in on April 7th, 2020. And then your first in-person meeting wasn't until April 19th, 2022. So the first half of your term, you, we had to learn on the fly how to onboard new council members in a world of online communication. So watching you navigate your onboarding process and engaging with your colleagues and your community in new and creative ways, virtually, that was unheard of. And as a council and as a council member, we and you navigated that beautifully. And watching you build those relationships with your community and your colleagues has been, it's been, it's been great to watch. And I think I'm glad you had two and a half years to preside over, over the council in a, in a normal setting. But those first two years were, were hard. And it was, I don't think anybody thinks about that anymore. But I just wanted to remind everyone where we came from and how we got to where we are in this amazing building that we all built together. Thank you for your work on that and all the many other projects you shepherd us through all of those years. You're welcome to take those with you or leave them. All the mementos for people to look at throughout the meeting. But I just wanted to explain this engraved block that says, Charles Lee, Corder Madera Town Council, Councilmember from 2020 to 2024, Mayor 2022 to 2023, presented December 3rd, 2024. And it's, it's got our logo engraved into it. We typically would give an outgoing council member a gavel plaque. But three years ago, we started providing gavel plaques to the mayors at the end of the mayor's year with the gavel that you used during your year as mayor. And you were the first mayor to receive that. And now you're the first outgoing council member to receive this. So I hope all of these mementos help you look fondly on your, your service. And thank you. Thank you for being a part of our community.
Charles. I just wanted to remind everyone that when you achieve these titles of public service, of leadership in your community, you retain that title for life. So I'm just going to ask everyone if we can have one more round of applause for Mayor Charles Lee. Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you, everyone, for the kind words. Makes me want to come back.
Two years.
All right. So do I now step down? Is that?
We've, Amy, do, do we, do we have him leave yet? Or do we wait for the reorganization?
Because the next is the oath, right?
Yes. All right, so we'll.
So ciao.
Okay. All righty, sir. Thank you. All right. So we're going to move on to item five here on tonight's agenda, which is the administering the oath of office for our new council member. Come on up, sir.
Thanks for being here, Lee family. Love to see you all show up. Really nice.
Enjoy Bermetown for us.
So we're now going to proceed with the oath of office for our newly elected council members. And we're going to start with James H. Andrews. So if you could please hold up your right hand and read the oath of office out loud into the mic.
I, James H. Andrews, solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, that I will, will and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
I only state that the evidence that you should matter shall be the truth.
I do. Thank you. We do.
The process will be the same. If you could please hold up your right hand and then read the oath of office statement.
I, Fred Casissa, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and alliance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this. That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And that I will, will, well, and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Do you solemnly state that the evidence you shall give in on this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So hope you, God?
I do.
Congratulations. Now you can both take your seat at the dais.
Thank you.
Yes. Oh, yes.
Here, I'm getting.
Oh, I can get out of the back. Right, exactly. All right.
That's okay. I'm not really.
Right, Jim and Fred, welcome back to the Corder Madera Town Council. Good to have you back. It's been a while. Yes. All right, we're going to take a public comment on this item. Um, anybody in person who'd like to speak on this item, come on up to our podium. If you're on Zoom and you'd like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand and we'll bring you on. Not seeing any in-person public comment. Do we have any hands up on Zoom, Lorena?
Sorry about that. I wasn't prepared. Um, looks like we do not have any hands raised on Zoom and we didn't receive any emailed public comment for this item.
All righty. Thank you very much. So that concludes item five, the oath of office. We're going to move on to item six, which is reorganization of the town council. It looks like six A is a recognition and a presentation of gift to the outgoing mayor. Who knows something about that?
Thank you, Mayor Beckman. Um, so as Rebecca, um, or Assistant Town Manager Rebecca Vaughn, announced earlier, we started a tradition three years ago where we take the gavel that's used by the acting mayor and then put that on a gavel plaque as a recognition for your time as the mayor. And this is the gavel that you use throughout your full year as mayor, um, for the town of Corder Madera. And your gavel plaque says, presented to Eli H. Beckman in recognition of your outstanding leadership, vision and tireless dedication to the town of Corder Madera. Your commitment and service have truly made a difference for everyone in our community. And the year is Mayor 23 to 2024, presented on this third day of December, 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh.
Thank you, guys. Really appreciate it.
Very kind gesture. All right. I don't think we need to do speeches. We've been through this before. Um, let's get to the good part. We're going to select a new mayor. So with this, um, I'm gonna invite council members to make a nomination for mayor. Would anybody like to make a nomination?
Mike would work. I'd like to nominate Vice Mayor Patricia Revazio.
And I would like to second that nomination.
Thank you.
Lorena, could we have a vote on this item? Should we take public comment? All right, we're going to take public comment on this item first. If you'd like to speak on this item, come on up to our podium here if you're in person or raise your hand if you're with us via Zoom. Not seeing any in-person public comment. Do we have any hands up on Zoom?
We do not have any hands raised on Zoom or email public comment for this item.
And with that, we are ready to have a vote on the nomination of Pat Revazio for mayor of Corder Madera.
Councilmember Casisa?
Yes.
Councilmember? Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Revazio?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Jane, we don't need to change seats.
We don't need to change seats. We'll just change name tags. Little. Oh, wait, but I'm not becoming Pat unless we are changing seats. We can change.
We can change seats. Eli, okay. I guess we're changing seats.
Madam Mayor, take it away.
I get to sit next to Rosa again. Okay. So I'm seeing that we don't have any presentations tonight.
Mayor, um, Revazio.
Well, I'm so sorry. I have to oversee the selection of our vice mayor.
Thank you.
So is there a nomination for vice mayor?
I'd like to nominate Rosa Thomas.
Second.
And so are there any public comments related to Rosa Thomas being named vice mayor? And are there any online?
We do not have any hands raised from attendees online, um, or emailed public comment for this item.
So unless there's any comments from the council, I guess we can take a vote. Okay.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
And Mayor Revazio?
Yes.
Councilmember Casisa?
Yes.
Sorry. Thank you. The motion carries.
We promise not to be Thelma and Louise up here. Well, stay calm. Okay. So number seven, we do not have any presentations tonight, and that moves us to the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. They'll be approved by a single motion. Any member of the council, town staff or the public can request removal of an item for discussion. So are there any requests for removal of any of the items?
Yes, the, uh, is eight D, uh, minutes. I'm going to abstain from that.
Okay. Does that mean we should take eight D off or just, okay? And is there anything else that would like to be pulled off? Anyone? I would like to, um, have a brief, uh, discussion about eight C. The, uh, swim program.
Pull that too, I guess.
Okay. So can we, uh, hear from the public or online if there are any additional requests for items to be taken off the consent calendar?
We don't have any hands raised or removal of items from the consent calendar or emailed requests from members of the public.
Okay. So should we first take a vote on eight A and eight B?
I'll make the motion to, uh, approve, uh, consent items eight A and eight B.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casisa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Revazio?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
And then if we can do the minutes from November 19th, 2024?
I'll make a motion to approve consent item eight D.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews?
Standing.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casisa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Revazio?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Okay. And so on the item eight C, um, this is regarding the report from Soma Aquatics. And I hope everybody had a chance to read it because the swim program was really successful last year and the community really liked it. And the reason I'd like to pull it off is because we've all, most of us have heard that Redwood High School pool will be resurfacing itself, uh, this summer. And so, um, we will not have a place, will not have the same place for a swim program. And I've asked Adam if he could just kind of update us on what the options are there regarding how to carry the program.
Well, yeah, and, and thanks to Mayor Revazio. The, uh, I just, in speaking to Jeremy Engman, who's as came and presented on this item, represents Soma Aquatics. He confirmed actually today that yes, the Redwood High School, uh, swim, uh, swimming pool will be resurfaced next summer. So that will not be accessible. So, uh, you know, we're very early in the process of thinking about what alternatives there might be. And I think the best thing to do frankly, would just be to come back to this item in the early part of next year and present some options or alternatives. Um, it's going to require some thinking outside the box a little bit and whether or not the council ultimately will be comfortable supporting a, a program that either one has more limited, uh, programming, based on the pool size and the pool facility that we're able to locate and, and secure for, for the programming, um, potentially out of Corder Madera as another option as well. I think the challenge is we've had two great years building a program up that is now starting to build, gain some momentum. And it's just sort of an unfortunate with that, the third year here, we're, we're not going to have the same location which people have gotten used to. The other option, of course, is just forego, um, next year, swim, you know, supporting a swim program in the next, uh, fiscal, uh, next summer as well. So more, definitely more thought to put into this. And I think the best thing to do would be to come back um, as early as possible next year, February or so, and, and, and present some options for the council to consider regarding the swim program in 2025.
Great. Does anyone else have questions regarding this report or this program? Of either council or the public?
And I would just, since we're opening this up, I would just say, one of the big takeaways from the report is that, you know, the move to make this a free program, did, was one of the, I think, more significant pieces of this that elevated the attendance. And that was at least reported as reported by Soma Aquatics themselves. And in particular, the low income program for free, um, that provided free swim lessons on weekends saw a huge spike in attendance.
Also, another point on the report that I thought was really interesting was how Larkspur participated, but not at such a high degree because they weren't allowed to swim free. So possibly in the future, we could consider a partnership with Larkspur. So we do a Twin Cities program and get maybe their financial support as well. As part of that. Okay. Anything else on that? So I guess we need to approve the report. So do I have a motion for number?
Mayor Revazio, because we pulled the item, um, I think we have to take public comment and we do have a hand raised from Patty Stolier.
Okay.
Patty, go ahead whenever you're ready. She might be having difficulties. This has happened before. Patty, if you'd like, you can email your comment to me and I can, um, put it into the record if you'd like, if your microphone isn't working. And it looks like it's not working. And that's the only hand, um, that we have raised. We don't have any additional, um, public comment for this item.
Okay. Then can I hear a motion for, uh, acceptance of the report in number eight C?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casisa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Revazio?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Okay. Next up is, uh, our first public hearing tonight, nine A, the first reading and possible introduction of an ordinance adopting amendments to Title 18 zoning of the Corder Madera municipal code to repeal and replace chapter 18.31 accessory dwelling units, ADU, and junior accessory dwelling units, JADUs. And we are going to, um, hear about this from the staff, but first I do believe that both I and former mayor Eli Beckman are going to recuse ourselves. We're heading to the peso. No, just curious.
Should we state the nature of why we're recusing? Um, so I have a conflict of interest. My business builds ADUs.
And I am currently under contract to build an ADU on my property. So.
Fire.
Oh, the night. Though I should have been paying closer attention. You bet. I learn from the best. All right. So, uh, shall we now hear from staff?
Yes. Thank you so much. I'll just do a quick introduction to this item. Um, Amy Lyle, Community Development Director. And I just want to also say that Martha and Tracy have done a tremendous amount of work on this subject and this ordinance that's before you this evening, as well as, um, Claire, who is our assistant, uh, planner, who's not here tonight. But I do want to note that this really represents not just their work, but a lot of collaboration among other jurisdictions as well. We've had support from our housing collaborative in the county, as well as the ADU center, which you'll hear more about in the presentation. And a lot of this is really due to changes from state law. The state has been very active specifically around accessory dwelling units. And this is really a key to housing productions, not just for Corder Madera, but for the state. And the state has really streamlined, um, as much as possible through legislative action. And so every year there have been changes made that require us to amend our local regulations. Even as, uh, as soon as a few months ago between planning commission and you all, there has been changes that we've had to navigate. So, um, this really does represent what state law is requiring us to do. If there is not an introduction and adoption, our ordinance would basically revert to state law. So our staff recommendation represents the importance of keeping the flavor of what our community wants in line with what the state requires us to do. And we hope that you see that this evening. It is rare that we have two recusals. So we have three of you. And we do need three votes to be able to introduce this and to, um, to adopt at the next, um, hearing. And I will also note that this is also related to our housing element and it is a requirement of our housing element for your consideration tonight. And, uh, work plan item. So we are on time with that work plan item and are really proud of the work that's been done so far. So we hope that you ask questions and, um, really, um, take this to heart tonight. And, um, and with that, I'll turn it over to Martha and Tracy for their presentation.
Good evening, council members. Next slide. The town last updated its ADU ordinance in, uh, 2020. And since that time, as Amy mentioned, there has been quite a bit of, uh, activity at the state level regarding ADU bills. So the draft ordinance includes, uh, three different types of changes. The first is changes to comply with state law. The next category is clarification of existing regulations. And lastly, there are some policy amendments. Uh, the majority of proposed changes fall into that first category, uh, changes that we need to make to our ordinance to ensure that it's consistent with state law. Uh, the staff report includes a robust discussion on the various bills that have been adopted in recent years. We're not going to go over that as part of tonight's presentation, but we're happy to answer any specific questions that the council may have on any of those ADU bills. Um, the draft ordinance is included as attachment one to your staff report and a red line version that shows all of the changes is included as attachment five. Uh, since 2020, the community development department. Since 2020, the Community Development Department has permitted 63 ADUs as shown on this slide. An additional four ADUs are currently under review. Approved ADUs include a mix of new detached structures, conversion of existing spaces within existing homes and accessory structures, and also junior ADUs. And by definition, a junior ADU is limited to a maximum size of 500 square feet. The size of ADUs approved range from 182 square feet to 1,200 square feet. And the size of JADUs approved range in size from 162 square feet to 497 square feet. Attachment Three to the staff report includes a list of all of the ADUs that have been permitted since 2020. And Attachment Four is the map that is shown on this slide. The Planning Commission discussed ADUs at its October eighth meeting. The commissioners raised questions and provided feedback to staff in anticipation of a draft ordinance. The planning staff also hosted an ADU workshop on October 17th. The workshop was well attended, approximately 10 people attended in person and an additional 20 people participated remotely via Zoom. The goals of the workshop were to provide an overview and receive feedback on proposed changes to the ordinance, to share information on the pre-approved ADU plans program, which as required by state law will be going into effect on January 1st, and also to promote resources that are available to homeowners considering building an ADU. As part of the workshop, there are also an opportunity for individuals to provide feedback to staff on some of the proposed changes to the ordinance. Comments from both the commission and the public inform the draft ordinance that is before you this evening. The Planning Commission subsequently held a public hearing on November 12th. The Planning Commission, on a unanimous vote with two commissioners absent, recommended that the council adopt an ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 1831. The commission did make several modifications, next slide, which are shown on this slide. There are four, there are five recommendations made by the Planning Commission. Changes one, two, and three were made to address comments that was submitted to the town on November 12th by the California Housing Defense Fund. And this comment letter is included as Attachment Eight to your staff report. The Planning Commission also included in their recommendation a change to the ordinance to reduce the required rear yard setback for ADUs that are greater than 800 square feet to 25 feet for all properties zoned R1A, R1B, or R1C that are greater than an acre in size. And lastly, the commission requested that the review of the record be added back to the draft ordinance. Staff had recommended removing this section from the draft ordinance. The commission also requested that the $300 filing fee be removed. And as communicated to the council yesterday via a memo, staff inadvertently left this $300 filing fee in the draft ordinance. This memo has been provided to the council and also is available on the website. And staff is recommending that the council direct staff to remove this from the draft ordinance and that change would be made prior to the second reading. Now I'd like to turn things over to Tracy, who will be going over changes to comply with state law.
Thank you, Martha. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Tracy Higgy. I'm an Associate Planner in the Planning Department. As Martha stated, many of the changes to the town's existing regulations are necessary in order to comply with recent changes to state law. Next slide, please. One of the ways that state law has informed the town's draft ordinance is related to the allowed number of ADUs. The town's existing regulations allow a maximum of two units on a lot with an existing or proposed single-family residence. With current regulations, the only way to add two units to a property would be to combine a detached, a detached ADU with a JADU. Proposed regulations would allow for a maximum of three units, which include an interior ADU within the existing residence, a JADU, and a new detached ADU. This change is based upon an updated interpretation by HCD of one of the provisions of California Government Code. HCD has clarified in their recent ADU handbook that the allowed number of units is any combination of these units. And furthermore, HCD reviews local jurisdictions' ADU ordinances. And as they are reviewing those, they are providing comment letters to jurisdictions that is consistent with the number and type of ADUs that must be allowed be a max of three units, the interior, the JADU, and the new detached ADU. Draft ordinance reflects this. Also consistent with state law, the allowed number of ADUs on a parcel that's developed with the multifamily dwelling has changed. Current regulations allow ADUs to be created within the existing spaces of a multifamily building. At least one interior ADU may be created, or up to 25% of the existing number of units may be created within the building. Additionally, a multifamily property owner under existing regulations may construct up to two detached ADUs. Changes to state law, which will become effective on January 1st of next year, increase the allowed number of detached ADUs on a lot with an existing multifamily building from no more than two ADUs to no more, no more than eight detached ADUs, provided that the number of ADUs not exceed the number of existing units on the, on the lot. Slide, please. The existing ordinance allows a detached or an attached ADU to be a maximum of 16 feet in height. Or when more than 50% of the ADU is above an existing or proposed garage, the total combined structure may be a maximum of 25 feet in height. And consistent with new state law, a detached ADU within a half mile of a major transit stop may be up to 18 feet in height. And an additional two feet is allowed for the roof pitch of the ADU to align with the roof pitch of the primary residence. It should be noted that there are no single-family parcels in Corder Madera that are within a half mile of major, the major transit stop as it's defined in the Public Resource Code. Also, state law now allows a new detached ADU on a lot with a multifamily, multi-story building to be up to 18 feet in height. And arguably, the most significant change to height as a result of new state law is that an attached ADU may now be up to 25 feet in height, but, but not more than two stories. The previous maximum height for attached was 16 feet. Staff also proposes to allow an increased height for ADUs in the floodplain that are required to be elevated pursuant to FEMA standards and our own local standards. And we have information on that proposed change later in the presentation. Recent state law has also informed changes to setback requirements for ADUs. Famously, existing ADU regulations allow a reduction in the side and rear yard setbacks to four feet. And in these cases, the ADU is limited into a maximum size of 800 square feet. The, the ADUs that are greater than 800 square feet, of course, those must comply with setbacks of the underlying zoning district. There's no change to the side and rear setback requirements in the proposed draft ordinance. What has changed is pursuant to state law. A local jurisdiction cannot impose limits on front yard setbacks. And what this means is that an ADU is allowed in the front yard setback if that setback would preclude the construction of an 800 square foot ADU. In other words, an ADU is only allowed in the front yard setback if the property owner can demonstrate that there is no other feasible area on the property that can accommodate the ADU. And again, this change is reflected in the draft ordinance. In addition to standards related to the height and size and location of ADUs, the existing ordinance includes objective standards related to lighting, landscaping, windows, and grading. An example of an objective standard is that a new window opening for an ADU that's within 15 feet of a shared property line shall be a clear story window. And staff is recommending a couple of changes to objective standards that are included in the draft ordinance. Two new objective standards were added, one to ensure decks on ADUs comply with existing zoning code and that the roof pitch of an ADU over a garage is the same as the roof pitch over the primary residence. Staff is also recommending a change to how objective standards are applied. And to date, staff has applied objective standards to all types of ADUs regardless of their size. Consistent with ADU state law, objective standards cannot be applied to ADUs that are statewide exemption ADUs. A statewide exemption ADU, for example, are interior ADUs, JADUs, or detached ADUs that are 800 square feet or less. In other words, the draft ordinance reflects that objective standards can only be applied to new attached ADUs and ADUs that are greater than 800 square feet. We've also taken the opportunity to define statewide exemption ADU and statewide exemption JADU within the draft ordinance. Next slide, thank you. The existing local regulations limit the number of bedrooms to a maximum of two. And the HCD discourages this restriction because it might be considered discriminatory towards family size. And therefore, staff is recommending removing the limit on the number of bedrooms. The town's, thank you for the next slide. The town's existing regulations state that a JADU must be created within the walls of an existing single-family residence and must include an existing bedroom. And state law, however, allows a JADU to be created from any area within an existing or proposed residence, including enclosed areas that are used for storage or an attached garage, for example. And so the draft ordinance clarifies that a JADU can be created from those areas as well. There's, if I can have the next slide, please. There's another large category of changes that staff is recommending and those are, that is to clarify any existing regulations that need doing. And there's one of those that we've identified and that's related to, next slide, please, ADUs constructed over a garage. Existing regulations permit an ADU above a garage to be a total of 25 feet in height when a minimum of 50% is constructed over a garage. Since state law permits an attached ADU to be 25 feet in height, the draft ordinance clarifies that the structure does not require more than half of the ADU to be over the garage. It's an attached ADU either way. So that 50% rule has been removed. Secondly, the existing standard does not establish setbacks for an ADU that's constructed over a detached garage. And since state law allows ADUs to take advantage of reduced siding rear yard setbacks of four feet, staff is recommending clarifying that an ADU that's located above a garage is required to meet the rear and side yard setbacks of the underlying zoning district. The draft ordinance also clarifies that the square footage of a new detached garage that's constructed to provide parking for an ADU is included in a total square footage of the ADU. I'll just turn it back over to Martha.
The last category of changes are proposed policy amendments. And there are three types of changes that fall within this category. The first is height of ADUs in the floodplain. The existing regulation limits the height of detached ADUs to 16 feet. And new detached residential units in the FEMA special flood hazard area must be constructed to be one foot above base flood elevation. And this is to comply with FEMA regulations and also Title 16 of the municipal. Staff has observed through implementation of the ordinance that it can be challenging for a homeowner to comply with these regulations to raise the home or the ADU to comply with FEMA regulations and also meet the 16-foot height limit. Several applications for detached ADUs in the floodplain have been redesigned as an attached ADU that is not elevated. And this was because it was infeasible to comply with the 16-foot height. The draft ordinance includes an additional height standard for detached ADUs in the floodplain. And it allows these ADUs to be taller if the ADU is required to be elevated to comply with FEMA regulations. The height, the maximum height would be 20 feet and the allowable height is based on the, the, the feet that it needs to be raised to comply with FEMA. So for an instance, if a structure is only required to be raised two feet to comply with FEMA regulations, the maximum height would be 18 feet. If it's required to be raised four feet, then the maximum height would be 20 feet. Units that are raised above 16 feet also would require an increased side and rear yard setback. As Tracy mentioned, the side and rear yard setback is four feet. So for each foot that the structure is raised above 16 feet, an additional foot would be added to the required rear and side yard setback. And this standard is the same as the height standard that was adopted for SB9 units in the floodplain. And that ordinance was adopted by the council in 2020. One of the survey questions at the community workshop asked individuals how they felt about allowing a taller ADU in the floodplain when it's required to be raised to comply with FEMA regulations. 10 of the 11 individuals who answered that question stated that they are in support of this change, with one individual saying that they had concerns with this change. This graphic depicts the, the proposed height standard for detached ADUs. Again, this is assuming that the property is in the floodplain and the ADU is required to be elevated in order to comply with FEMA regulations. So the maximum height would be 20 feet. And that maximum height would only be allowed if the structure was required to be raised a minimum of four feet to comply with FEMA regulations. And instead of a four-foot side and rear yard setback, the required setbacks would be eight feet. The next policy consideration relates to ADU permits. Under our existing regulations, ADU permits are required for all attached ADUs regardless of size, for detached ADUs that are greater than 800 square feet, and for ADUs created from accessory structures. If the structure is increased by more than 20% or 150 square feet, whatever is greater. An ADU permit is a first step in a two-step process. It is a ministerial permit that's processed by the Planning Division and there is an $850 application fee and it adds approximately four to six weeks to the timeline. As part of the review, staff verifies that the ADU complies with the standards in the ordinance and state law. A courtesy notice is also mailed to all owners within 300 feet. Following approval of the ADU permit, the applicant would then submit a building permit to the building division. And consistent with state law, an ADU permit is not required for interior ADUs, JADUs, or detached ADUs that are 800 square feet or less. Staff's recommend, staff is recommending that an ADU permit no longer be required for an attached ADU that is 800 square feet or less, or has a maximum height of 16 feet. And this aligns with a detached ADUs. And since 2020, the town has processed nine ADU permits. And as previously noted, 63 permits have been permitted. So the majority of, of ADUs do not require an ADU permit. They simply submit directly to the building depart, division with a, a building permit. And planning is still doing the same type of review on the building permit. So we're still verifying that the ADU complies with both state law and the town's ordinance. We also asked at the community workshop a question about the types of ADUs that should require an ADU permit. There were a total of eight individuals that provided an answer and you could select multiple answers for this question. So the first was that attached ADUs less than 16 feet in height should require an ADU permit. This answer is shown in blue. The second is that attached ADUs greater than 16 feet in height, including a garage, should require an ADU permit. This is shown in pink. And number three was attached ADUs in the floodplain that are raised and allowed to exceed 16 feet in height, up to 20 feet, as is being proposed. This is shown in red. And lastly, none, that only building permits should be required for all, all these types of ADUs. So it's pretty equal breaks, breakdown of kind of 50/50 between not requiring building permits for any ADUs and then that this ADU permits should still be required for some types of ADUs. These next several slides show pictures of ADUs that have been constructed in recent years. This slide shows two detached ADUs. On the left is 10 South Way, which is 800 square feet. And on the right is 2 Lanyard Cove, which is 610 square feet. Neither of these ADUs required an ADU permit since they are detached structures that are 800 square feet or less. Slide. This slide shows two attached ADUs where an ADU permit was required. And these are examples of attached ADU that staff is recommending not be required to obtain an ADU permit as the draft ordinance is written. On the left is an ADU at 525 Tamil Pious Drive. It's an attached ADU that's just under 600 square feet and it has a height of 11 feet. On the right is an ADU at 2 Paco Court and the ADU is the portion located to the right of the garage. This ADU was created through a combination of existing floor area and also in addition. And this ADU is just under 500 square feet and has a height of approximately 12 feet. And so again, these are the types of ADUs staff is recommending no longer require an ADU permit since they are, do not exceed 800 square feet and they do not exceed 16 feet in height. And next slide, these show- And next slide, these show pictures of examples of ADUs that would still require an ADU permit as proposed in the draft ordinance. On the left is an attached ADU at 447 Tamil Pious Drive, and the ADU is just under 900 square feet. So since it exceeds 800 square feet, that would still require an ADU. And on the right-hand side is 267 Golden Hind Passage, which was an ADU built above the garage. The ADU is just over 800 square feet, and it has a height of approximately 22 feet. So this ADU would require an ADU permit since it exceeds both 800 square feet and also exceeds the height of 16. And the last recommended change is related to the window standard. So as Tracy mentioned, there's an existing window standard, which is to address privacy concerns. And this requires that when a window faces a side or rear yard of an adjoining, adjoining property, that the windows be clear storey and have a minimum sill height of six and a half feet. Through the implementation of the ordinance, staff has realized that this doesn't specify if glass door openings are allowed on an elevation when this window standard applies. So staff is recommending to modify the regulation to specify that glass, wind, glass doors would also not be allowed. And again, we cannot apply these objective standards to certain types of ADUs. So if the ADUs, detached ADU that's 800 square feet or less, this would not, the standard would does not apply. So staff is recommending that the council, after review of all information, presentations, and public testimony, introduce an ordinance to amend portions of Title 18 to repeal and replace Chapter 1831. With the draft ordinance included as attachment one, and also that the council directs staff to remove the $300 filing fee from Section 1831 120, which is the review of the record section. This concludes our presentation, and we're available for questions.
Thank you for that very detailed report. Do we have any questions from council at this time? Okay, I'll start on the swing.
Things spatially challenged. 800 square feet. If we were to get out chalk and draw 800 square feet in this room, how much would it take up? Would it be roughly half the room up to Adam's desk?
I always think of a two-car garage as being about 400 square feet, so two, two-car garages.
Okay.
Just out of all the ADUs so far that have been permitted and built, do you know how many of those, or any idea how many actually used for affordable housing?
I don't. We, we're not sure how many. We are starting to ask our permittees to fill out a survey indicating, it's voluntary, but indicating how they're using the ADU for family, for rentals, none of the above. They can decline to answer, but we're starting to collect that information. Anything else we have is probably anecdotal, really. If you want to add anything to that.
I mean, we do hear from individuals that it's important to them to create housing in the community for people that work in the community. So we know of a handful of individuals that that was very important to them, and they went through great lengths to identify individuals that would benefit from an affordable unit. But it, yeah, we don't really have the empirical data.
Okay, thanks. And I may jump around, by the way, because there's a lot of information here. Definitely information overload. The $300 that you're recommending waiving, what's the background behind waiving that or getting rid of it, I want to say?
So the review of the record was put into the ordinance that was adopted in 2020, and it essentially allows an individual to request that the record be reviewed, and the review is done by the town manager, his or her designee. And it's essentially to verify that all of the standards have been evaluated correctly. And a review of the record really is only, could be requested if there's a courtesy notice, because otherwise a building permit gets issued and no one really has an opportunity to request the review of the record. But staff frequently ask questions when ADUs are being constructed in neighborhoods, and there never actually has been a formal review of the record. So we didn't feel it was necessary to charge that fee. And it's a service that we're already providing to the community by, you know, answering these questions when they come up, and it just wasn't felt like it was, it was necessary.
Okay. Then most of these changes are due to state law, correct? The majority of?
I would say about 85 to 90%.
Okay, which we have no choice, right? We have to comply with state law. Okay. Do you think once we make these changes, do you think how that's going to affect ADUs in Quorum there? People, you think it will encourage people to build or not to build, or is it hard to say? And again, these, some of these are more philosophical than just flat-out driven.
I think more and more, as the state is making these changes, they're trying to encourage people to construct ADUs, and it's having the desired effect. 63 ADUs since 2020 is, I think, for a small jurisdiction like Quorum there is pretty significant. And as we're seeing more flexibility coming from the state and obviously through our local ordinances, that it is incentivized or encouraging and promoting these types of units to be constructed on single-family residential lots and multifamily lots.
Thanks. And then I, I kind of lost track on some of the slides you were going through. Can I create an ADU out of my garage?
And if you do that, you're not required to replace the parking.
Okay, okay. And that's against an over-the-counter permit, correct?
That would be a building permit.
I may have more, but that's it for now.
Let me sort of go off on a hypothetical, or if Mr. Pixley were to show up today and say he wanted to develop Chapman Park. Okay, what would be the minimum road width we would require him to lay out that development to have? Okay, what sort of parking would we require? Okay? And you know, I'm just trying to get a feel for sort of well, my impression is in 19, roughly nineteen, in the 1930s, the state said this is the minimum criteria for development. But you're grandfathered in, if you've already got roads. How many of our roads are grandfathered in be, in not meeting those criteria?
RJ can jump in if I misspeak, but I'd say a large percentage of the roads in the hillside neighborhoods did not meet minimum requirements for roadways. I believe it's 16, 20 feet.
Thank you, Ruben Martin, Fire Chief and Fire Marshal for the Central Run Fire Authority. Councilmember Andrews and members of the council. So the California Fire Code requires a minimum of a 20-foot fire apparatus access road. So a minimum of 20-foot wide for a fire apparatus to get through. We understand that most of our roadways in the hillside communities are what I call pre-existing non-conforming, which is in the building standard world, world means it was built before today's standards, or what would be required today. We evaluate our apparatus or access anytime we have building, regardless of ADU, single-family residence, or multifamily. Sometimes we're constricted with the sites that are being developed. And so we try to work around with the property owners to try to come up with solutions that can help try to mitigate some of that. However, the 20-foot roadway width typically, I would say, if I could without overspeaking on the public works side, is typically without parking. Right. You look at your typical, say, planned community.
Two 10-foot travel ways.
Correct. Two 10-foot travel ways plus parking. So you're looking at anywhere from a 28 to 40-foot public right-of-way.
And in passing these legislation, is the state waived any sort of health and safety requirements for the stuff they're imposing on us?
Amy Ackerman, Town Attorney. No.
Will they indemnify us?
Uh, no, the state will not indemnify us. The state legislature has declared that the shortage of housing is a matter, is a statewide crisis, that the state has now preempted localities. And that's the basis for much of the legislation coming through. Localities which have tried to challenge some of these have not been successful. So in this example, you know, we, we are required to comply with state law. And I think Amy put it really well. If we, if our ordinance doesn't comply, then we default to state law, which gives up some of the areas in which we still can legislate our own objective design standards and so forth. So we do want to adopt the state law changes to preserve what local control we still have in this area. Some of the housing laws have some health and safety exceptions. Some do not. I think that this is an area where, you know, I think we may see some legislative corrections as concerns about disasters, floodplains, fire, you know, do, do reach to the legislative level. But at this point, you know, state law says what it is, and as a locality, we are subject to it. But you raised.
I have the impression that down in Los Angeles, if you wanted to develop a parcel and the road was in the opinion of the planning group down there, too, too narrow and needed to be widened, they could say, basically require you to give up easement to widen the road. And that they have passed, the Sacramento passed legislation prohibiting that. Is that true?
It's hard. I don't know if we studied that exact case, but I will say there are generally, and, and please, Amy and Martha and Tracy, but my understanding is that through the creation of ADUs, you're not allowed to place any additional objective standards on ADUs than what the state has specifically said. You can. So something like requiring a, a road to be a certain distance, or requiring, we went through this before, with requiring a fire hydrant to be placed down, you know, 200 feet away from your property on the public right-of-way are not permitted. And so I, in that example, I would think that would be the, they would, somebody would say, requiring that you're placing an easement, another objective, basically a, an additional standard beyond what the state requires on that ADU, or the creation of the ADU would not be permitted. But it's hard to say without knowing the facts, the specific facts of that example.
So if we have a road that's too narrow and somebody, and we know we we had unlimited money, we widen the road. And somebody wants to plop an ADU in the middle of it. We couldn't sit there and say, hey, move it back four feet because you've got a 14-foot wide road, and we need it to be at least 20.
Yeah, I think, hypothetical, I think if you're doing the road first, and that's created, you're doing certain legal mechanisms to make sure that your road is passable at a certain width. And so therefore, you know, I don't see how you would run into that circumstance post the creation of the, the width of the road. Because it would no longer essentially be the applicant's property, the property.
Okay.
If I could elaborate on that a moment, I also want to note that the recommendation and the ordinance before you does not include any changes to our hillside neighborhoods in Christmas Tree Hill.
I'm aware of that.
Okay. So that staff does agree with your points that there are some limitations on where these can be placed.
Yeah, but we need to add at least three more neighborhoods. But anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we focused on the question at hand. Which is approving what is required of us at this time. And, and perhaps there will be other things that we can look at down the road. You know, this is a very you know, the conversation of creating housing, it's kind of like, this is, this is sort of a step that's being taken at a time where things a long, long time ago should have developed differently. So we're just trying to do the best we can with what we have and what the state is asking us to do. And what we need to do tonight is decide about whether or not to accept this version. So you have something further?
Yeah, I just have another question, just because I can't remember this. If we approve this tonight, it comes back for a second reading, then it gets implemented 30 days after that? Sorry, just can't remember. Okay.
That is correct. And I'd also like to point out, we are required to send our adopted ordinance to HCD for their review. And it's their practice, if there are aspects of the ordinance that is inconsistent with state law, they, they notify the jurisdiction and so we will be doing that.
Do those reviews take longer than 30 days? Do you, do you know?
Generally, yes.
So, so theoretically or in reality, would that ordinance kick in? In other words, we approve it, it gets approved 30 days after that, right?
Yes.
And the state could take 90 days to review it, but meanwhile, what we have approved is in effect.
Yes.
If we have no more questions from staff, I want to open this up to a public comment. Do we have any online?
We do not have any hands raised online, and we did not receive any emailed public comment for this item.
Okay, do we have any in the room? We do not. And so with that, we should bring it back to council for comments and discussion. Who would like to go first?
First of all, I want to thank the three of you. I'll throw in Amy also, because I'm sure she reviewed a lot of this. This stuff is totally complicated, but I appreciate the staff report because I know it's a lot of information. But I heavily rely on you guys, and usually your staff reports are right on with the way they worded, and the way I can read them, I can interpret stuff. So I really appreciate that. And I know this is a lot of work, and I also appreciate the work by, you know, the planning commission workshops and all that to get community input. So I appreciate all the work that's been done, because you make our job a lot easier. To me, I can support the changes you want to make. Part of it is, we don't really have any choice. If we sat here tonight saying, we're not going to pass this or any of it, we're going to be in violation of state law. So to me, on one hand, we have no, no choice on the 85%. On the 15%, from what I understand, from what I hear through the discussion, is that they're reasonable changes. And they've gathered community input. So from that perspective, I can support the changes that are going to be made.
First, I'd like to thank you for your staff report. It's very well-written. And like Fred, I will have to support this because the state, Sacramento really doesn't give us any choice about that. But I am getting more and more concerned about the densification of housing up on our hillsides where we have not built adequate roadways to get the people out of there, you know. Everybody talks about Christmas Tree Hill. But I can remember before I rolled off council before, I was driving up Kamina Alto, and I think I saw the fire chief's SUV cut down Upper Chapman. So I said, hmm, that's interesting. I'll follow him. So I said, hmm, that's interesting. I'll follow him. And so he goes down there and just about where Alta Way merges with there, there's a big fire truck. So in order for the fire truck to get out, get by, he had to scurry up, uh, a driveway. I scurried up another driveway and then, uh, the fire truck, truck was able to get up there. But if I had a half a dozen cars behind me wanting to go downhill and the fire truck wanted to go uphill, we would have had a bit of an impasse. And so I'm, you know, I'm, I'm very concerned with Sacramento mandates to put housing in areas that are, uh, relatively high risk in their sort of in total indifference to, uh, uh, safety. So that's just my pet wine. Thank you.
And to keep it short, I'll just say that, you know, people do, hopefully people will make the choices that make sense for their own safety. Um, you know, may people may feel it's not a great idea to build uh, additional dwellings in an area that they know is inaccessible. And also people may say, I don't want to live there. They might build it and no one wants to rent it. So there's a lot of, um, what ifs. I think that, uh, we need to, of course, follow the law and see where it leads. And I think that we do have some, even if it's permitted and, you know, you get a building permit, that doesn't necessarily mean that it, these will always go forward because people get information and they make decisions. So, um, I can support, um, submitting this as it is, see what the state comes back with and, you know, we'll make the decision then of or like some sort of robust, um, evacu- evacuation studies so that maybe we can justify denying a permit if, if it comes to that. But, um, I think there are a lot of factors in this, and I think that by, um, approving it, it doesn't guarantee that risky construction will, will take place. So, um, I support that we move forward with the, uh, ordinance as it is.
Yes, we need a, a motion to introduce, and I would suggest, uh, the motion to introduce the ordinance with the change recommended by staff to, uh, uh, eliminate the sentence regarding the fee. And I have to, in all full disclosure, I appreciate the thanks. It doesn't go to me. It's our very able assistant, uh, town attorney, Ann Danforth, who works very hard with our planners and planning commission.
So.
I'll go ahead and make the motion. She blew it up number 18. I'm making motion introducing ordinance to amend portions of Title 18 of the Corredamira Municipal Code to repeal and replace chapters 18.31, uh, ADUs and junior ADUs with the draft town council ordinance included. It's an attachment one with no number on it. And direct staff to remove the $300 filing fee from section 18.31.120, uh, review the record.
Second, clarify that is to introduce it with the change that's recommended by staff.
We don't have to vote. We just.
Yes, um, so we do.
Yes.
Oh, you seconded the motion, um, and I will call the vote. Uh, Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman abstained from this item. Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Ravasio also abstained. Um, thank you. The motion carries.
Thank you.
It was a nice vice mayor, nice, nice work.
Because that goes in the bicycle path. Is that the right?
Let's see.
That goes to the bicycle path on San Clemente.
You know, it's like, um.
It's really wide. It's that.
Should have been wider.
It's gonna be K. Okay.
Thirty, forty years ago.
Plus or minus.
But we can't because you're in, end up in somebody's living room.
They're gonna be doing that, starting that work.
And, you know, it's sort of like a bunch of short side of decisions for the last 100, 120 years.
Okay. Are we ready? All right. Up next is, uh, item number 10, business items. Discussion and possible action to adopt resolution 42 slash 2024, establishing public electric vehicle EV charging user fees for the town-owned EV charging stations and possible direction to staff on EV charging program implementation. Assuming we have a staff report.
Um, good evening, Mayor Ravasio and council members. Uh, my name is Phoebe Golden. I'm the town's climate action and adaptation coordinator. And as the mayor stated, the, this item is a discussion and possible action to establish uh, user fees for public EV charging stations which are soon to be installed. And as council is aware, supporting EV adoption is a climate action priority adopted in our climate action plan. Uh, and this is because transportation is the largest source of activity-based emissions in town, accounts for uh, 72% of emissions, and that's primarily from passenger vehicles. And transitioning to EVs is one of the most significant actions we can take to reduce emissions from this sector. Um, as the graph on the right shows, while vehicle miles traveled has stayed relatively constant over the years, going back to 2005. Um, the red line shows the emissions from transportation, which has declined over the same time period. And that's primarily due to the transition to more efficient and electric vehicles. So currently, uh, about 13% of light duty vehicles in Corredamira are EVs already. And nearly half of all new vehicles that are being purchased in Corredamira are electric vehicles as well. So we are, um, on our way and on track to meet the adopted, uh, goal in our climate action plan of having 25% of the registered vehicle population be electric by 2030. And, um, increasing public EV charging opportunities is one strategy that can help us meet and exceed that goal, especially for those that don't have access to charging at home. So with that in mind, um, staff and the Climate Action Committee have been identifying and evaluating potential locations for public EV charging stations over the past year or so, uh, focusing on town-owned sites. And last year, through a free technical assistance program that's offered by MCE Clean Energy and administered by a consultant called ClearResult. Uh, these six sites shown on the screen here were identified or evaluated for their technical feasibility and cost effectiveness. And those are, uh, San Clemente Park, the Park Madera Shopping Center, the Community Center Parking Lot at Town Park, Pixley Avenue Parking Lot at Town Park, Mankey Park and North Mankey Park Lot. And the Town Hall site, which we'll be talking about tonight, is not shown here because the chargers there were already planned as part of the Town Hall project. Uh, but this effort was really helpful in helping to prioritize the sites and understanding the existing electrical capacity at those sites. And I'll pass it over to RJ to talk more about the site selection and prioritization process.
Great. Thank you, Phoebe. So, um, this is really the criteria that was used to evaluate kind of, and put these sites into different tiers, if you, if you want. Um, so is it located on Town on Parcel? We felt that was important to actually have the authority to implement. Um, does it support town EV fleet or, or any function for the town? Um, implementation timeline, does it require PG, PG&E upgrades? Or is there already an electrical panel that we can tap into without getting PG&E permits in the same time? Um, the cost to deliver, um, anticipated usage and/or parking volume at the site? And does it support residents who may not have, have access to in-home charging facilities? And so, um, in going through those criteria and going through all the sites, um, we have initiated, um, construction contracts for, uh, upgrades at these two locations. So these are in process. Um, we currently have three, um, charging stations at Town Hall that are um, on a wall box system that aren't really up to the current standard for public charging spaces. And, um, we're, you know, planning to, um, upgrade those to a new system that Phoebe will get into later. Um, but, but we believe this was a priority because it supports the town fleet. Um, we have an existing 200 amp panel that we're able to, um, tap into, so we don't have to do another permit with PG&E. Um, we've seen medium to high usage, um, and the minimum, minimal time to implement this, um, is, is really what we see. And then also, um, cost is low to moderate and, and part of that is because of the number of charging heads and available grants. The second location, um, that we're pursuing at this moment is Pixie Parking Lot, and this is closer to the playground. Um, we see a high parking volume in the park, especially, you know, spring, summer when weather's nice. It's, it's often hard to get a, a, a spot there. Um, we do have a smaller existing panel. It's 100 amps, um, that we're able to tap into. Um, so for that reason, there's minimum time to implement. Um, we also know that there's a number of, um, condo or apartment complexes that, um, could be served for those that don't have access to in-house charging. And, um, because of, um, you know, the amount of stalls we anticipate, uh, implementing and rebates and all those things and overall costs to implement the infrastructure, we see it to be a low to moderate. And then looking forward, um, these are really kind of the next rounds of sites that um, we're focused on, but also wanted to get feedback from, from council today. Um, the, both of these would require PG&E permits, um, but we believe these are, um, you know, high priority sites for Corredamira. So at Miki Park, um, and then, you know, in discussions with, um, some other electrical contractors and whatnot, um, really 400 amp panels are the most effective because once you go over that, it, it involves a whole nother layer of equipment, switch gears and other things. Um, and really the, a lot of the cost and effort to get a new 200 amp panel is similar. So you might as well get a larger one and have more charging capacity. Um, so we're exploring, um, and we've done some site work to identify, um, you know, where we think these would connect to the PG&E grid and, and get some kind of rough estimates of, of how, um, quickly these could be implemented and what the cost might be. Um, but we're pursuing a potential 400 amp panel at Miki Park, um, as well as at the same Pixie Park site where we're implementing four without going through permits. We're looking to upgrade, um, a panel there and potentially put another four at a higher charge capacity or, or speed. Um, since we think that's, you know, I think probably are likely going to be our most busy, um, site in town of the public available spots. Um, and by investing in, um, this phase two, you know, we're not, um, losing a lot of costs that we're investing in this phase one that's currently active. We've already built a lot of those, um, into the current design. And by putting in larger conduits and other things, so we can very easily pull larger uh, conductors and other things if needed when we get the permits for the larger, um, panel. Um, but one thing that we have the option today and would love some feedback is, um, the bulk of the costs will come once we actually get the permits. Um, the permits will likely take, um, nine, potentially 18 months. Um, but to initiate the permits, it's only a few thousand dollars. So, um, yeah, I think, you know, if, if time is of the essence, it makes sense to, you know, invest small amount of 3,000 or so per site, get the permits going and then fund the remainder with future, um, fiscal year budgets for implementation. Next slide, please. And then, um, you know, that another area where we, um, would love to get some feedback is just looking at the, the three other sites. Um, you know, Eastman Parking Lot is also busy. It's a smaller, um, parking lot, so not as many stalls. Um, currently we could get two EV stalls using the existing panel. Um, but that, you know, cost per stall goes up because it's, um, more infrastructure and, and less stalls. Um, Park Madera Shopping Center, um, it's, I guess, low to medium parking volumes. Um, we think this would also need to go down the PG&E permit route to, to do this proper. You know, we're not sure if this, um, you know, we would, we would probably pursue a new panel and, um, and to get the most out of it, you would want to maximize it and maybe get up to eight stalls, but we don't know if that site can actually um, support EV stalls. So I think some more to understand there, uh, before making investments and then, um, but there is a potential to do, um, two 32 amp level two ports on the existing panel, um, which is, which is something we could do in a near term. And then lastly, San Clemente, um, which is also the parking lot adjacent to Cove Middle School or Cove, um, Cove School. Um, we don't see a whole lot of parking volumes during the day. Um, it doesn't mean that, um, people in the neighborhoods wouldn't use it to charge. Um, but again, so much of the investment is in the baseline infrastructure. And so, once you do that, you might as well put in a higher number of stalls. Um, if you just put in a couple, you're going to pay, you know, almost similar cost to what you would pay um, for eight stalls, but you're only putting in a lesser amount. So, um, that's kind of where we are in terms of how we've kind of stacked them into three tiers. Um, but, but happy to get feedback and see if we need to make some adjustments. So.
And if I can, I just, I just thought it was important. I wanted RJ to lay out just the broader and longer term context. We're obviously discussing this singular um, uh, plan for charging and, and the immediate sort of EV stations that we're intending to set up at Pixley and, um, at Town Hall. But I think just understanding this is where we're sort of going. I think we wanted to communicate that to the council at this point. And, and certainly not asking you to provide any direction necessarily, but if that's, there are certain like red flags that you wanted to communicate to us with that longer term vision, happy to hear it at this point before we go down that path. But I'm sort of, you know, I think it's a good direction that we take. Um, we're also going to gain some information as we roll out and, and Phoebe's going to get into this in a second. Um, the, the first tranche of EV chargers, um, and see the utility of those as we go forward in the next couple of years.
Okay.
So going back to the near-term implementation plan, um, after prioritizing the first two sites, Town Hall and Pixie Park, uh, the next step was to select a vendor. So staff researched several different vendors and operational models and selected Blink Charging to install at the initial two sites. Blink is on MCE's approved vendor list, which means it's eligible for their rebates, which help make the project, um, more affordable. It's also a source well-awarded vendor, which means it's gone through their RFP embedding process to be approved to sell to public agencies. And their chargers are available in both single and dual port configurations and also come in various charging levels. Uh, their level two chargers have the universal J plug, which works for all EV charger or EV electric vehicles, uh, although Teslas do require adapters. And then also importantly, their stations are able to accept payment by credit card, which is a state requirement now, but not all vendors have, uh, caught up to that. So as RJ mentioned, at the Town Hall site, there are currently three existing stations which are used to charge town fleet vehicles. This project would replace all three of those with Blink stations and also add two stations that would be for public use. And this will provide network charging, uh, internet connectivity and remote monitoring for all five stations, which currently the pre-existing stations don't have. And so there'd be five total single port level two stations, uh, providing 32 amps, which is about 20. uh providing 32 amps, which is about 25 miles of range per hour of charging. And then at the second site, the Pixie Parking Lot, we have a just 100 amp panel there, so there's a little less capacity to work with. So two dual port stations will be installed, so they'll be providing charging at four parking spaces. Um and they'll be using a power management software to do that. So each station will have a max of 40 amps. And when just one vehicle is plugged in, it'll be receiving that full 40 amps, which is about 30 miles of range an hour. Uh depending on the vehicle's capacity to accept that charge, some vehicles can't charge at that rate. Uh but when two vehicles are plugged in, they'll to one station, they'll essentially be sharing that 40 amps between the two vehicles. So each would receive 20 amps and be charging at about uh 12 miles of of range per hour of charging. And as RJ also mentioned, this is the site that we're looking at a potential panel upgrade to expand charging opportunities in the future. And both of these sites will use MCE's deep green option as all of the towns accounts do, so they'll be charging with 100% renewable clean energy. And these are expected to be operational by the end of the year. So to open these new stations to the public, uh user fees must be established. And staff surveyed other jurisdictions in Marin with public EV charging, and the rates ranged from about 30 cents per kilowatt hour to 47 cents per kilowatt hour. So the base rate that staff are proposing is 42 cents per kilowatt hour, which is sort of in the mid-range of what other jurisdictions are charging. And this fee staff are estimating will cover the estimated operational cost of these stations based on some of the analysis that was done by ClearResult MCE consultant as well as current electric and networking rates. However, the actual costs of operating the stations will depend on how and when the stations are used. Um because these sites do have a time of use rate plan, so the electricity cost varies based on time of day and season. Um so this is an estimate. Uh in addition to the base rate, which is per kilowatt hour, staff are also proposing an overstay fee, which is intended to encourage ton- turnover and make sure that more users can access these stations. So staff are proposing a limit of four hours, which is sort of common among charging stations. After those four hours, the user would have 15 minutes, sort of a grace period to move their vehicles out of the charging space. And after that point, if they don't move their vehicles, they would start to be charged um by the minute for staying in that space uh with a fee cap of $25. And this fee would only be effect during, in effect during the daytime, and the purpose of that is to allow residents who live nearby to plug in at the end of the day and charge their vehicle overnight without needing to wake up in the middle of the night and and go move their vehicle. And then finally, um these fees are likely to need to be adjusted in the future. Um potentially soon, based on if this estimate of 42 cents is really far off what the operational cost ends to be, or just in the long run as electricity costs change. And so staff are proposing uh to prevent bringing this back to council multiple times, that the director of Public Works be granted the authority to adjust that base rate um as needed, based on the actual operational costs of the station and with the goal of keeping the station's revenue neutral, so not generating any.
Yeah, and I'll just touch on that. I mean, I think um potentially as that report comes out each year, we could either hold rates, follow that recommendation of what we're seeing in the um cost of utility industry. Um but obviously, if we want to go beyond that, we'd more likely do a fee study and and have an analysis done before we um make any more severe changes.
So that concludes our presentation. The action that um staff are are looking for tonight is specifically related to the fees, and the option is to adopt the resolution that was included in the packet as presented. Adopt the resolution with modifications or direct staff to bring back or revise resolution at a future council meeting. Uh likely the the next council meeting as the stations are um expected to be operational by the end of the year. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. So who would like to start with questions? Anybody? Right?
Yeah. Did you look at Granada Park at all? That's in a right flight. It's in a residential area surrounded by houses.
Um, we did not. Um I think early on, um I don't know if, I don't believe there's any electrical infrastructure there, so trenching all the way down to the driveway would be on the higher cost side. So for that reason, I don't think it made the initial list. Um but we could always confirm that and see if it's um, there is a tap point. I I just, I don't believe there is.
Okay. And if I can remember, don't we own the small parking lot behind Five Points Fitness?
And we we do own it, yes.
Did we look at that space also?
No, no. I mean, uh uh we we didn't. I mean, I think typically we see those um shopping centers developed on themselves and the on those lots, but we haven't looked at it, something we could potentially do.
Yeah, I I think that was another location where there wasn't a meter that the town owns that's near to that site. So that was one of the criteria we looked at, just because establishing a new meter is a is a significant project and cost.
Okay. Um that's all I had. Off comments, though. Thanks.
Okay. Anything?
I have a question. Uh. When you're looking at, you know, possible new sites, uh and I'm thinking like Pixley uh behind the rec center behind uh Park Madera, whatever. Do you evaluate their current usage now? Figure out whether they're already filled up before you put in charging stations? It will take a half a dozen spaces.
Yeah, I mean, we do consider that. Um, you know, we're not, I wouldn't say running stats, but we're around the area enough that we have a sense of what's going on, and that's part of why um the Eastman Parking Lot didn't rise up into that higher category. Um because we know it is much more limited in parking spaces than Pixley.
Yeah.
Um and and so, yeah, there, you know, that one in particular would be an interesting one, um because we we believe we can get potentially two stalls using the existing panel. But otherwise, you're doing the full investment, and at that point, you're going to want to push for four to eight to get your money's worth. And the question is whether that makes sense, given how people use that area for parking.
Anything else, Jim?
So let me see, this resolution we're voting on is just the fee structure? We aren't signing off on all the future locations.
Correct. Anything? I just have one question. I know that the um Mace Rich Special Events Lot has had some electricity demands that have been difficult to meet for special events like the movie nights and the car show, and there was talk of an ice skating rink that would require a substantial panel. So I'm just wondering if we could kind of, I mean, I love the Minky Park thing where we're doing the EVs but also providing for community use. Can we maybe look at a partnership with Mace Rich on that? Because they they seem interested, at least current management does, in terms of creating more events there that will bring more people to the mall. So just wondering if that's possible.
Yeah, I think um, you know, obviously, we, for these sites that don't have an existing panel, um unless there's a cost share because of some private property, you know, we're investing in, for instance, that 400 max kind of idea, but from there, doesn't have to all go to EV if there's other um competing interests that council believes are, you know, equal or more important. So um and and how we really work through that, you know, the the stations themselves have some software that might be able to um load share in a in a more um efficient way, so we'll we'll study that. But I think really, anything is on the table if if it's um a benefit to the community, so.
Yeah, and I I would just say on that, though, with respect to if we're looking at where to place EV chargers, that would not be a primary spot to put them, because we don't have parking demand out there during the vast majority of the year. So you're and you're also not close to any of the retail establishments. So typically, actually, a lot of the new regulations that are getting placed, put in place, um we're putting actually, I think they get pri- like the closest to the storefront, or um, you know, sort of priority parking and EVs go up up close to those spots. Um but generally, it's just, yeah, it would just be a a not something as part of an EV uh parking or charging um policy that I would say that that would be a place that we would actually look at to um provide those chargers.
And and that raises another point. Um so as part of all these, we're also um factoring in ADA compliance, so even if we put two stalls in, we're going to have to allow one to be um accessible. So um even those, for instance, like Pixley, we're looking at having four stalls that could be charging all at once. One will be a disabled parking stall that you know, may or may not be used as frequently. And so if we can load share, it actually will give more capacity to the other stalls when it's not used. But obviously, if it's used, that's fine. It's it's share, it's shared and equitable. Um but it does really um start to become a factor in placement of stalls, accessibility to stalls, um number of stalls available to the general public. Um because I think it's right around, I think it's minimum one, or I think it's 25%, so.
Uh one question, and your comment just triggered it in for me. If something is marked as handicapped parking and it has an EV charging station, who gets to park there?
So that is a dedicated EV charging stall for a disabled um person with a disabled placard. You would not be able to park your EV without a disabled placard in that stall. Um, I don't believe so.
Yeah, you you have to be charging.
Yeah.
There would be signage explaining that to be site.
And I just have one more.
Yes.
Um, you mentioned at Pixley, probably down by the playground. At Micky Park, where would those spaces be approximately? I don't know if you've given that any thought or?
You know, um, I think some of that's fluid, depending based on some of the kind of concepts we've seen about what Micky Park could look like one day. I mean, if it was current conditions, there is a transformer very close to um the existing bus shelter. That's likely where we would tap in. Um but it kind of depends on the the future plan there.
Okay.
Okay, so um opening this to public comment, I don't see anybody in the room who might want to come. Scared them all off. Lorena, do we have anybody online who has?
Yes, we have two hands raised. We'll start with uh Lynn Simon. Go ahead, Lynn, whenever you're ready.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, I was just curious if there are current, I think I heard that there are current charging stations either in Town Park or planned for Town Park. If they've been purchased, what will be the dispensation of those?
Is that the end of your comment?
It's a question.
Okay. Um, Mayor Ravazio will return to questions after we take all public comments.
Oh, sorry.
Um, next up, we have Roy Wolford.
Uh, three questions and a clarification. So what uh provisions have been taken to secure the charging stations from theft and vandalism? Uh, I think the estimate right now is over 20% of the charging stations do get vandalized. And they're trying to get the copper and other precious metals out of them. That's question one. Question two, how mu- how many dollars have been budgeted uh for the repair uh of the charging units, repair and maintenance, particularly if there is vandalism? As uh insurance, and the question three, has insurance been considered uh to purchase uh for van- you know, in case of the vandalism of the units? And I guess uh for uh if the units are damaged, what's going to be the time to repair? So are you going to wait a day, a week, a month, a year? Uh I didn't hear any of that brought up. No, I I didn't, I didn't necessarily hear the very first part of the presentation, so that may have been brought up. And then uh the last item is, I I thought I heard that MCE, the chargers are going to be using, or at least some of the chargers will be using MCE provided uh en- energy. And it was 100% green or deep green. Now, that program is not guaranteeing delivery of electricity. What it guarantees is that the person who is on that program is purchasing renewable energy 100%. The dollars they're paying aren't going to uh traditional energy generation. So uh, you know, households, and I've brought this up many times with the council. Uh if you have three houses right together, uh one's deep green, one's light green, and the other is just regular PG&E. Uh, the people that are paying for the MCE green energies may not get, be getting any uh renewable energy from solar panels or wind unless their neighbor is generating electricity and putting it back on the grid. So that's a misconception. I've brought that issue up with M- MCE, and it looks like they failed to make it very clear. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, hi, is that?
Um, we have one more hand raised. Um, doesn't have a name and just says iPhone 25.
Nick, Nick, Nick Gervars. Hello?
Yes, go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, yeah. Um, well, I've owned an EV both since 2019, so that's what, five years? Uh, and so I've got a lot of experience with these. Uh, and I, uh, many of us used to charge there behind the fire department where that car is now parked 24 hours a day to plug in, so we can't use it. But anyway, uh what I'm concerned about is Blink it, Blink, it's asked, it's called Blink. Do you know their maintenance record? Because I can guarantee you that EveCo and ChargePoint, all these stations, many times, they're just down. They're not working. So I'm curious whether Blink has any maintenance record.
Okay, thank you very much. I think now we will turn to staff and see if they are able or interested in answering any of the questions that were raised, RJ?
Sure. Um, I think the first question was about just schedule of implementation of the stations here at Town Park, and so we believe that'll be done by um the end of January. And then there's a handful of questions, kind of all um relating to similar things, but um you know, as part of the price that we've um um established in our contract, we have a two-year warranty. And that two-year warranty is actually with our local contractor as opposed to the less local um supplier. And so I think as we probably have all experienced in some capacity, you know, it's one thing if you buy a TV and it's got a warranty, but good luck getting it fixed because it's coming from the supplier somewhere far. But if you buy it a warranty through a local store, you actually have a place to go and take care of it. So um we see that as a benefit, and that's already built into our um payment. Obviously, beyond two years, we'd have to see what our options are. Can we extend or how are those those things go? Um but that really is our initial solution for this kind of um first launch. Um and so we would expect, um, you know, aside from parts being shipped, that repairs would happen somewhat immediately. Um we have a good rapport with the the contractor that is is installing this and that is holding the warranty. Um, and otherwise, um, you know, we just have general um And otherwise, you know, we just have general budgets for town infrastructure. And so sometimes you don't know where, you know, a repair is going to be needed. And so we do every year set aside funds. And if it happens to be an EV stall, we would use that if we didn't, if we weren't able to tap into the warranty. And then you want to take the Blink one, I've got, I can elaborate on it. But.
Yeah, I think that partially answers that question as well. But yes, one of the reasons why we selected Blink and not some of the more popular vendors that you see around is for maintenance reasons. And we've heard some real issues with other stations being down for weeks or months at a time. And so from our understanding of Blink's history and with the local maintenance support we have, we're hopeful that this will be a better solution for Corder Madera, and we won't run into those same concerns.
And and one thing that does make Blink more unique or rare, I'm not going to say they're the only supplier that does this, but they handle both the software and operating side, and the actual station components themselves. Whereas I think the majority of them, they do one or the other. And so hopefully, you know, you get pointing fingers, well, this is a software issue, or this is an electrical issue, but we got one supplier, and that's it.
Anything else? I think the vandalism question was that addressed?
Yeah, I think, you know, really, we would just use the warranty. And otherwise, we'd have our town infrastructure budget, if things came about and that we couldn't address for, you know, a vandalism does occur. It's unfortunate. We should have occurred less. Obviously, if we see a site being targeted more and more and more, then we'll have to look into some other options, whether that's cameras or more troll, or who knows?
Yep.
We'll just add that, you know, we're going to learn a lot from this first round. And I think one thing that we'll learn is if we see that vandalism is becoming an issue, maybe we incorporate into our criteria for assessing future sites, you know, prevalence of local CCTV, or or, you know, how easy it would be for us to install CCTV. But I think, you know, we're going to learn a lot from this.
Sounds like that's a nice segue into the comments portion. So nobody else online waiting to talk? Okay, so are there any comments regarding this from council before we move to a question? Rosa, anything?
Well, kind of the things I was thinking about. I think Jim asked some of those questions and the maintenance. I guess the only thing is the I like the idea that the this company does both the hardware and the software, because one of the questions was, what is the life of the unit itself? And as opposed to, do does it just get updated from within? Or is the hardware of it, is there a life to it? You know, it's out in the elements, et cetera, whatever. But it sounds like all that gets taken care of just because. I would assume that new models come available even under Blink. So is something, is that all included with the 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 contract?
So my understanding is the stations are generally pretty durable. You might have the charging head that gets kind of smacked around, and you got to replace that. But that's a less costly part. If you ever did have to do a station as a whole, I think that material is $6,800. I don't know the exact life, but I would, I would presume 10 plus years. But yeah, from talking to our contractor who installs a lot of these, they said it's usually not the station that that has issues. The actual, you know, hub, it's 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 the charging head, or it's the software, or something like that. Yeah.
Anything else?
From my perspective, on the fee part, I can support the fees. The only change I would make is I think under the fee escalator, where it says Director of Public Works, I would put Director of Public Works or Designee. There should always be a backup, no offense, RJ, just in case you're out on something happens, you're out on leave. There needs to be a backup and not just rely just solely on one person. And then some direction on just the program itself. You may want to rethink just Park Madera Shopping Center. I don't know, I don't think any of us know what's going to happen with that long range. I just wouldn't want to see us make an investment. And then five years from now going, God, wish we hadn't done that. We should have put it here or something else. I would rethink that. And I definitely think it's going to cost money. We need to put something on the east side. We have to figure out how to balance things out in this town. And I've seen that with Park and Rec, where we load everything up on one side, and sometimes we forget about the other side. And it doesn't have to be tit for tat for putting in eight on this side. Doesn't have to be eight on that side. But we definitely need to get charging stations in on the east side. I don't know. And again, I realize that there's going to be an extra cost of that. Don't know if that's Granada Park, or if it's a parking lot behind Five Points Fitness. And I'm just bringing up that small parking lot because it's something different, different, and it could support those businesses at the same time. And it is surrounded by residential with Harbor Echo on the other side, Golden Hyde, and then Madera del Procedio. But again, we definitely have to figure out something on the east side. Thanks.
Is, yes, Eli?
Thank you. I'd agree with Fred's comments. Great staff report, by the way. Thank you, guys. Really well, well organized information, well presented. I support the staff recommendation as well. The only thing that I might suggest is maybe looking at raising the cap on the idling fee, because I think the goal of this, right, is turnover. We want these chargers to serve as many car, we want as many people charging their cars as possible. That's why we're building them. That's how we're going to get the most return on investment. That's how we're going to get the most greenhouse gas emission reductions. So I would look at raising that maybe to like $50, like Nevada did. I agree. I think, you know, I think putting chargers at Park Madera Center would be great for business. But I do, I don't know if that makes sense before we have a master plan for that site. So I think it makes sense that you guys had it, I believe, in tier two, if I recall. I thought your whole tier system looked good to me. I agree with how you broke that out. RJ, was there a question from you about direction on whether we should begin the permitting stage for for the Mankey Park Phase Two site? Because if so, I would support.
Yeah, I was certainly some feedback, but if you have some, but that kind of is the direction we're trending.
Yeah, I'd say if it's if it's a small investment, as you presented it, then I would say let's absolutely just move on that right now. So that if we find ourselves with an opportunity next year, we're ready to like pounce. Other than that, the last thing I'd say, I just echo Fred's comments. I think long term, I realize, you know, this is just the beginning. But long term, I think we're going to need fast chargers in town, like we've said. And I think we're going to need to see charging on on the east side as well. So I appreciate all the work you guys have done in moving us forward. And I'm excited to see where it goes. Thank you.
And I will second that sentiment that we really appreciate the fact that Corder Madera is moving ahead as as well and as quickly as we are. The fact that one half of all vehicles are now being purchased as electric vehicles, that's a real sign that this is the right, right direction to go. So can we get a motion?
I can make a motion. I just have one quick question for you on the rebates. Do we get those rebates when we install? Or do we get them when we get the permit? I'm just afraid those rebates at some point in time, they're not going to be around.
Yeah, so we'll apply for those after the stations are installed. But that I know there's not a risk of them running out in that timeframe.
Okay. All right. Thanks. And with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt resolution number 42, shash 2024, establishing public EV charging user fees for town-owned EV charging stations.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews?
Your vote.
Would like to, you need to.
Your vote. Mayor Revazio, can I, I know this was, I apologize for interrupting the motion that was just made. But I do, since Councilmember Beckman raised this question of whether to charge $50 for the overcharging fee, I would like to make sure that if that's the council's direction, that's that would be part of this resolution.
Does anyone have an opinion on that?
Yeah. And then also Fred's comment about and Designee, right? He gave authority to the Public Works Director, and Fred is saying, or his or her Designee.
Designee, and then going to $50. I thought 25 sounded high, but I.
I just feel like what we don't want is somebody who's got enough money that they bought an EV to just be like, you know, what's $25 for day parking? And, you know, they work in the city, they're used to paying 60 for day, whatever, you know. But I just feel like what we want is turnover. And I feel like people shouldn't be paying the cap, the top fee anyways, because they should be coming to get their car and leave. And it's, you know, it's on a timer, like it's, it's by the minute. So it's not like you just get whacked with a $50 fee if you overstay by one minute. It's, you know, if you're, if you're really committed to hogging the spot, that's not cool. That's my thought.
So it would be $2 a minute?
Or it would just keep accruing for longer.
Until up until 50.
And do you have a preference? Should it be $2 a minute? Because you're cutting people, like you're cutting people off faster versus if it's a dollar a minute, some could be there 50 minutes versus 25? If we turn to turn them over?
I think, man, I think raising the cap.
Still do it a dollar a minute and just go to 50?
That would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I did. I think I'd be worried about the one, you know, the couple people who weren't paying attention and then really want to flip out on staff and all that. So.
Okay, so I will defend you.
Okay, so with that, I'll go ahead and amend motion number 422024 to include raising the cap to $50 and also adding under the fee escalator, Director of Public Works or Designee.
Does your second told? Well, just to be safe, second.
Thank you. Councilmember Andrews?
No.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Revazio?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Very detailed and great report. Appreciate it. So we move on to council reports, and our wonderful town manager, Adam Wolfe, is up.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick reports. One, I just wanted to note, I was Tim, our Park and Rec Director, Tim Berry, and sent me some pictures of the turkey trot on Thursday morning, which was a wild success. As I'm, as I'm told, it was, I think, at least 500 to 600 people crossed the finish line. So this is an event that just, I think, one of our former council members worked with Park and Rec to start this several years ago, maybe during even our COVID. And it's just growing and growing each year. So it's become a real tradition for some families on Thanksgiving, which is, which is great to see. And pictures were all ages and types of people running and coming together as community. So that was great. And I want to thank our Parks and Rec team for being there and supporting as well as some of our public works. But I know that they, our maintenance crew does some help to set that up as well. And just a quick report, I just wanted to let the council know we're, we're, we're working very, at this point, finally, I think, gotten a lot of traction with Caltrans on the overcrossing with, at least getting the engagement that I think had been, it wasn't that it wasn't there, it was just lengths of time, we're being focused on the engineering of the overcrossing. We're working closely on more of the actual pedestrian, the mixed, the multi-use path piece of this project. And I just want to thank Craig Hartman, who was originally involved in this effort all the way back in 2017. And unfortunately, is no longer a Corder Madera resident, but still feels very passionately, passionately about this project and has devoted many hours over the last several months just to make sure some Caltrans is thinking creatively and understands the importance of an impact that designing a nice facility here could have for the entire town and stitching, again, all purpose of stitching the town together through this multi-use path. So we're making some progress. Had a meeting today on this, but I just want to let the council know this is, staff continues to work on this. You know, it's not going to be, there's a lot of constraints, as you know, on the actual facility itself. But I think we're going to get a nice facility out of this much better than obviously they exist today. And when we have something to present, I will come back and show the council sort of where we are on design. And with that, I have, I have no other reports.
Okay, council, Jim Andrews, anything to report? Rosa?
And I have nothing this week.
I always have stuff. 1120 attended age-friendly Corder Madera. 1121 attended RVPA meeting. At that meeting, we decide to, there's numerous issues between JPA financial considerations going on. So basically, what we did is we created two different committees. One will handle the JPA, the other one will look at the financial consideration part of it. On the JPA, there's actually all four of the fire chiefs, there's four camp, four board members, I'm representing Corder Madera on that, and the town managers also. And then on the other one, same thing, there's four board members, all the chiefs, and then it'll also be the directors of finance from all the towns that are involved. So again, there's these, there's complex issues. Also, 1121 attended MWPA board meeting. 122, I attended a Marin Transit meeting. We approved a contract with the Gelati Brothers for the facility on Kerner Boulevard to basically electrify that facility, charging stations for buses. There will be charging stations also for EVs eventually, and install solar powers. So that's kind of exciting. And also two other things at that meeting, one is Supervisor Katie Rice was recognized because she's outgoing for all the work she did for Marin Transit, yellow bus routes. It was just a variety of things. And also, we had a reception after the board meeting, celebrate 60 years in Marin Transit. So they've been in business for 60 years. And then I also attended the Evergreen Hotel opening with then Mayor Beckman to do the ribbon cutting. The hotel's pretty impressive, by the way. They did a really good job on it. Really impressive. Thanks.
All right. As Fred said, November 20, cut the ribbon at the Evergreen Hotel, beautiful property. I'm really impressed with with what they've done there. And the team was so nice. So that was a great event. November 21, had an MCE Executive Committee all-day strategic planning session. November 22, I participated in the kickoff meeting of the county's new sea level rise adaptation planning process. That seems like it's going to be a really robust group, which was great. And then on December 3, today, the Central Marine Sanitation Agency ad hoc committee meeting. And at that meeting, we hired an independent consultant to help advise us as we sort of develop and refine Sannerfell Sanitary District's proposal for what I'm calling like a soft consolidation with CMSA. So we'll see how that shapes out. And once a proposal is actually developed, then it will come to to the SD2 board and SD2 staff for input. That is all.
Okay. I just have a couple things. I did attend the MCCM Legislative Group, where there was a lot of discussion about the session that's happening right now regarding sort of protecting California from various initiatives. On a lighter note, we have a holiday tree lighting planned by Cafe Verde and the Chamber of Commerce, who's donated towards the Christmas tree. And I got to go and personally pick out the first Christmas tree I've ever bought without having to measure it. I got the tallest one on the lot. It is absolutely beautiful. It's going to be put up on Thursday, and then we're going to light it on Friday. And the lighting celebration, where it will actually be lit for the first time, will be Friday, right around 7 o'clock. We have a volunteer musician who's going to play music, and she's produced five albums, and she's just moved to the area and wants to get to know everybody. And then the other thing on the calendar that I hope you'll put on your calendar is the Town Band's holiday performance on December 18, co-sponsored by The Lions. That's in the evening. And as I know, you've heard me say before, the band sounds really good now. They've got a new conductor and really great. So hope we'll get a good turnout for that. That is at the Community Center on Thursday, the December 18. Okay, so that takes us to number 12. Do we have any discussion regarding the draft agenda for upcoming town council meeting? Anybody? Okay, well, with that, I think I can adjourn.